You're ready. Camp back out, camp back out now. Hi. Hello, hello, hello. If everyone could take their seats so we can get started. Thank you.
Do you need a program? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am trustee Eva Laredo and I have the pleasure of serving as HCC trustee for District 8 and as board chair of the Board of Trustees. I am pleased to welcome you to the ceremonial swearing in of our recently appointed trustee, Renee Jefferson Patterson in District 2. We are lauded that you were able to join us to witness and celebrate this momentous occasion. We would like to take a moment to recognize our special guest joining us today. Would all elected officials please stand for recognition? All right. But we, since you stood up, you beat me to the punch. I said, "We also have council member Carolyn Evan Shabazz, District D, former board chair of Houston Community College." We also have with us trustee Maxine Lane Seals, former trustee, District 2. And we're honored to have with us trustee Dave Wilson, District 6. Dr. Prieta Vendable Starworth, District 9. And we welcome you all. Thank you. Again, we would like to take a moment to have the family and special guests of trustee Patterson joining us for this special occasion to please stand for recognition. Thank you. And we have a very, very special family member, her grandmother, and we welcome you. So wave, so they could see you. At this time, we welcome to the podium to lead us in the invocation, Dr. Charles E. Perry Jr., Senior Pastor, Word of Restoration International Church. Dr. Perry.
Will we bow our heads for prayer? Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts of gratitude, seeking your presence and blessing as we gather for this special occasion. We thank you for the opportunity to serve, to lead, to make a difference in the lives of children, families, and educators within the community. Now, Lord, we lift up Renee to you as she step into the role of trustee. And Father, we thank you for the heart of service that you have placed within her, for her dedication to education, for her desire to lead with wisdom, integrity, and compassion. And as she take this oath on today, may she always be guided by your truth and strengthened by your grace. And Father, we ask you to grant her discernment in every decision, patience in every challenge, and courage in every moment where difficult decisions has to be made. Let her leadership be marked by fairness, kindness, and a deep commitment to the well-being of the district she serves. And may she always be a voice for those who have none. And Father, we pray that she would continue to be an advocate for what is right and what is just. Lord, bless her endeavors, bless the teachers, bless the administrators, the staff, the students, and the families. And now, Lord, may this continue to be a place that makes a difference for so many. And then, Father, we pray that you would let your hand be upon the board, bringing peace, understanding, and collaboration among all who work together for the good of us all. Above all, we acknowledge that every good and perfect gift comes from you, so we trust in your wisdom and provision, knowing that when we seek you first, that you will always direct our path. And so, Father, we ask this in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
I'm honored to introduce our chancellor, Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher, to provide remarks on behalf of the college administration. Dr. Ford Fisher.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so very, very much for being here this afternoon. Today, we celebrate the continuance of excellent oversight and stewardship of Houston Community College through the appointment of a new trustee to represent District 2 on the Houston Community College Board of Trustees. On behalf of our administration, faculty, staff, and students, I congratulate trustee Renee Jefferson Patterson as she begins her term of service on the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees. Trustee Patterson, thank you for your dedication and your commitment to public service. Thank you so very, very much. We are grateful for trustee Patterson's heart, for students, for education, training, for all of HCC, and particularly the northeast Houston community. We look forward to working with trustee Jefferson Patterson to advance the mission and vision of Houston Community College and elevating the lives of those whom we serve throughout Houston and the entire region. As our vision states, Houston Community College shapes the future for its students with innovative, affordable, quality educational programs and services. HCC plays a pivotal role in creating a vibrant future of our region's economic development and workforce. So as trustee Jefferson Patterson joins the future work that we must do and the fellow trustees sharing the responsibility of governance and oversight, I congratulate you, trustee Jefferson Patterson, and I also thank all of our trustees for their unwavering dedication and commitment to the Houston Community College. Now, trustees, we appreciate your service and we look forward to working with each of you and the entire board as we continue to improve the lives of our students and the communities that we serve. Again, congratulations to you, trustee Jefferson Patterson. We stand ready and committed to working with you to create large-scale positive change educationally throughout the communities that we serve. Again, thank you so very much for being here, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Ford Fisher. Now, we will move to the administering of the oath of office. The trustee's affirmation of the oath of office is one of the most significant and memorable events that a member of the board has the privilege of being a part of. It is an opportunity to renew our commitment to the duty of office in an effort to make Houston Community College the most relevant community college in the country and to carry out the priorities identified for the institution to include the success of all our students. I am pleased to invite to the podium Renee Jefferson Patterson, appointed to the trustee position for District 2 unanimously by the board on February 5, 2025. We also invite to the podium to administer the oath of office, the honorable Maria T. Jackson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Trustees, chancellor, I'm honored to be here. I wish I would have worn my heels. Stand, no, stand right here next to me. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Renee Jefferson Patterson.
I, Renee Jefferson Patterson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Houston Community College System Trustee.
Of the office of Houston Community College System Trustee.
District 2.
District 2.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, trustee Renee Jefferson Patterson. Houston is getting a blessing. Stand right here.
Congratulations, trustee Patterson, and thank you to the honorable Jackson. It is customary at the conclusion of the administration of oath that the trustee is provided with a ceremonial certificate of election or appointment. So, there it is. We would also like, oh, here's another one. Certificate of Appointment. We would also like to acknowledge that Representative Charlene Ward Johnson, State of Texas, House of Representatives, District 139, sent a certificate of recognition to trustee Patterson on being appointed trustee in District 2. Again, welcome to the HCC, the Board of Trustees, and we look forward to continuing the great work we have begun here at HCC and even greater that's yet to come. We will now have remarks from our honoree, so please welcome to the podium trustee Renee Jefferson Patterson.
Good afternoon, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, and our distinguished chancellor, Dr. Ford Fisher. I stand before you with immense gratitude and an unshakable sense of purpose. My journey to this very moment began as a young girl raised by my grandparents and aunt who taught me the values of service, humility, and perseverance. Under the loving guidance of my grandmother, who devoted her career to the students and parents at Kincaid Private School, I learned the true meaning of community. By her side, I served mills to the homeless and brought comfort to the elderly. Witnessing the power of compassion and generosity left an undeniable mark on my heart, igniting a purpose within me to serve others, a purpose that has shaped every step of my journey. Unlike many, my path didn't lead directly to a prestigious four-year university. At just 20 years old, I became a wife and mother while also enduring the heartbreaking loss of triplets. Yet God has an incredible way of leading us back to our purpose. My journey in higher education began at Houston Community College. The Pondmont Campus was where I built the foundation for everything that followed. And then, there was the Northline Mall Campus. Oh, the challenges of deciding whether to go to class, sneak in a little shopping, or head to the food court. Those daily choices, though, played a small, big role in shaping who I am today. It was there that I learned the true meaning of resilience and commitment. With the steadfast support of extraordinary professors who believed in me, even when I struggled to believe in myself, I found the strength to keep moving forward. Houston Community College became my bridge to opportunity, empowering me to earn a four-year degree. It was this institution's dedication to students like me that paved the way to stand here today as your newly appointed trustee. District 2 isn't just the place I represent, it's my home. I was born in District 2, and it has been the heartbeat of my life. I understand the challenges, dreams, and aspirations of those that live there because I have walked the same paths. I'm a reflection of the resilient spirit within this community, a spirit that never gives up, no matter the odds. I am deeply honored to carry forward the legacy of the late Bruce Austin, who served within this role with an unmatched dedication for 24 years. His tireless advocacy for District 2 built this community brick by brick, ensuring that every voice was heard. Today, I proudly stand on his shoulders, along with the other trailblazers like Maxine Lane Seals, the late Beulah Shepherd, and my dear friend, the late Tanya DeBose. Their legacies inspire me to continue this journey with passion, integrity, and relentless commitment to service. I am driven by, I am driven by a vision grounded in three core pillars: community involvement and partnerships, expanding accessibility and opportunity, innovative program development and workforce growth. But this mission cannot be accomplished alone. It demands unity, collaboration, and the collective strength of our community. Together, we can create transformative opportunities that will shape the future, the future for generations to come. I am profoundly grateful for the love and support of my community, and I extend my deepest appreciation to all the candidates who were considered for this seat. Our journey is far from over, and together, we will continue to build and strengthen our district. To my beloved family. Thank you for your love, your patience, and your encouragement. To my incredible husband, this isn't in the speech, but let's just give a hand for my husband. He flew in today from St. Louis. He left last Monday and flew in today, so babe, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate you. Your faith in me, your prayers and your love have been my anchor and my strength, and I am eternally grateful. To my children, thank you for your patience, your love, and your belief in me. Because of that, because of that trust, Zoe, you have graduated from Tuskegee University and now inspire young minds as a high school science teacher at McArthur High School. Walter Patterson IV, who couldn't be here today, but he is thriving as a junior at Fisk University in Nashville, pursuing a degree in computer science. And while I think everyone knows Kyrie. Kyrie is blazing through middle school, keeping me on my toes every step of the way. I'm beyond proud of each of you. In closing, as I step into this role, I do so with humility, determination, and an unwavering commitment to advancing the future of our students, faculty, and communities. Together, we will build a legacy of hope, opportunity, and progress that will echo for generations. Thank you.
This concludes the swearing-in ceremony again. Thank you. We are so appreciative to each of you for taking the time to attend this ceremony. Please join us for a light reception in the auditorium foyer. Have a great afternoon, and we hope you enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you and stay warm. Thank you.
As we can get our people up here, we're ready to start. Trustees, if you're in the house, come on down. The regular meeting will not come to order on February 19, 2025 at 4:12 p.m. This meeting was called for the purposes as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. I am trustee Eva Laredo, board chair for 2025. And I want to thank my colleagues for their vote of confidence in electing me to serve as board chair. Thank you, colleagues. I would also like to introduce the other board officers for 2025. Trustee La Loue Davis, elected as vice chair. And trustee Sean Chabon, who's in London, viewing us from London, was elected as... viewing us from London, was elected as Secretary also. We would also like to again welcome trustee Renee Jefferson Patterson to the HCC Board. Trustee Patterson was appointed to the Board on February 5, 2025, by unanimous vote to fill the unexpired term for the trustee position in District 2. We are glad to have you on board and look forward to working together for the common cause of our students' success and completion. Let us keep Dr. Norma Perez in our thoughts and prayers in the passing of her dearly beloved Father, Mr. Jose Perez, on Friday, February 14. The arrangements are pending. Please remember to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, and also those that have lost loved ones. Also, keep Dr. Linton Gary and Dr. Adrana Tamias in our thoughts as they are recuperating from medical procedures. At this time, please join trustee Lalou Davis for the prayer followed by the pledges.
Eternal God of mercy, he who is keeper of the earth, overseer of all fates, we come together gathered here at the Houston Community College Board of Trustees meeting for February. We thank you for bringing us this far. We thank you for our ability to serve this institution and serve in the public interest. This Black History Month, we pray that you continue to undergird us, to guide us through the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. For you are the God of our weary years, the God of our silent tears. Help those who are unheard to be heard, help those who are weary to find strength. Guide us in the path in which you have us lead. In your name we pray. Amen.
United States of America and the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, may I make a quick comment? You thanking the Board for voting you in as Chair. As a Board Member, I would like to thank you for assuming the role of Chair, and I believe we're in the best hands we could ever be with you as Board Chair, and I look forward to working with you this year. Thank you for doing this for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I was going to say, I got this close enough. We are now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, Audit Committee, Committee of the Whole, Marketing Committee, and Special Meetings on January 15, 2025, and the Regular and Special Meetings on January 29, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for January 2025?
They'll move.
Second.
There is second? Second. Several seconds. It's been moved in second. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
No.
And we want to welcome our trustees that are on video. Welcome. We're now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes for January 2025. Voting is now open. Board Members, please cast your vote.
It's a yes for me, Sharon.
Received, received.
Yes, for sure.
It's a yes for me, too. The no isn't coming up.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
We will now move to our awards, presentations, and recognitions. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Good afternoon. Today, we have only one recognition, which is a short video and presentation in observance of Black History Month, which is being observed the month of February. Women's History Month observed the month of March, and International Women's Day, which will be observed on Saturday, March 8. Let's take a look at the video.
Visionary historian Carnegie once unfounded, but we now recognize as Black History Month, ensuring that the rich heritage and achievements of Black Americans are never forgotten. Since its official national recognition in 1976, Black History Month has served as a time to honor the resilience, creativity, and contributions of African-Americans in all facets of life. Texas holds a special place in Black history. On June 19, 1865, now known as Juneteenth, enslaved people in Galveston, Texas learned of their freedom more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. Juneteenth has become a powerful symbol of liberation, resilience, and the ongoing struggle for equality. In 2021, it was officially recognized as a federal holiday, reminding us that the fight for justice continues. Here in Houston, Emancipation Park stands as a lasting tribute to that struggle. Purchased by formerly enslaved people in 1872 as a place to celebrate Juneteenth, it remains a vibrant community space and a beacon of African-American heritage, embodying the spirit of perseverance and progress. That same spirit of determination has long driven the fight for civil rights. In Houston, Black students played a pivotal role in desegregating the city, organizing sit-ins, protests, and legal battles that challenged segregation in restaurants, movie theaters, and schools. At Houston Community College, we honor this legacy by recognizing the invaluable role that the Black community has played in the fight for justice and in shaping our society. Our courses and programs celebrate these achievements, educating and inspiring students about this rich heritage while fostering a deeper understanding of the path to build a more just future. Education has always been a cornerstone of empowerment. Institutions like Houston Community College play a crucial role in uplifting communities, providing opportunities, and shaping future leaders. Through education, we continue the legacy of those who fought for progress, ensuring that every generation has the knowledge and tools to thrive. As we celebrate Black History Month, let us remember the struggles and honor the triumphs of our community, and let us commit ourselves to building a better future where justice and equality are realities for all.
In March, we turn our focus to International Women's Day, which will be celebrated on Saturday, March 8, and to Women's History Month. This year's theme, "Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations", celebrates the collective strength, struggle, and impact of women who have dedicated their lives to education and leadership. We honor the fierce bravery of these women who have often gone against the current to create meaningful change and foster social justice. In Houston alone, we have many trailblazing women to celebrate, including Barbara Jordan, the first African-American woman from the South elected to Congress, and journalist Lynn Cecilia Yusen, whose activism helped secure scholarships for Black students and established the SHAPE Center. We also honor journalist Laura Elizabeth Bibb Foot, who fought for women's suffrage, and Chicana activist Gloria Garriola, a fierce advocate for the dignity and rights of working class Mexican-American communities, along with Ellen Ochoa, the first Hispanic woman to travel to space. We extend the recognition to women around the world who have shaped our society, including Malala Yousafzai, Rigoberta Minchu, and Frida Kahlo. At HCC, we are proud to have a community enriched by the contributions of women educators and administrators. We are committed to continuing this work through our many courses and programs, which are dedicated to fostering understanding and knowledge of women's history. But Women's History Month is about more than celebrating past achievements. It's about looking forward. The women of today are paving the way for future generations through education, activism, and leadership. We encourage our HCC community to take part in events that highlight the stories, struggles, and triumphs of women who continue to inspire us all.
And Madam Chair, this concludes the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Thank you. We open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts, an overview from conferences or workshops attended, and/or to recognize individuals for their outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. We ask trustees to limit their respective comments to no more than two minutes. Thank you. Trustees, we'll start on that end.
I'd like to say that trustee Sean Cheban and I visited the Capitol for Association of Community College Trustees National Leadership Conference. We had the opportunity to visit with our congresspeople to let them know what community colleges need as a whole, and then what we needed individually. I think that congresspeople were very surprised at the need that the community colleges have from the national level. It was very important for them to see the numbers. And there were over 1,400 trustees that attended the conference. So, we inundated the Capitol. Even in the snow on Tuesday, we inundated the Capitol, and I am very glad that ACCT gave us our green sheet. And I want to thank the Governance Leadership Group, Ramel Young and, where's Ms. Grigsby? Way back there? For leading and guiding us and for giving us the appropriate information that we needed to present to our congresspeople. We want to say thank you because the work you did is exceptional. And I would ask that we would consider putting those documents online, because people need to see and understand what will happen to us if we do not have the U.S. Department of Education, where that funding is coming from. We need to see that. Why we have a U.S. Department of Education to make sure that funds are equitably distributed, and how important community colleges are in this education process, and how important those funds are to the severely underserved. We serve the underserved, and without those funds, we would not be able to do so. So, I want to say thank you to the governance team, and I think we had Dwight Boykins, and what is the other gentleman's name?
Kyle Gilston.
Kyle Gilston? Those gentlemen walked us for six hours. I am saying it. Six hours across the Capitol, but they made sure that our congressional leaders received the information they needed to receive. So, thank you, and thank you, Chancellor. We will see you all in October at the National Conference.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry I can't be there, but it's glad to, I'm glad to see your faces, and I just want to say congratulations to you, trustee Jefferson Patterson, for your swearing-in today. But, Dr. Vandable-Starwart, I want to thank you for making that point, because it does, that information should be on the website, because so many people don't understand what actually takes place when we go to Washington, D.C., and meet with members of Congress. They really think that we're just there, you know, just taking a trip at the expense of taxpayers, when in reality, we're actually fighting to create a better educational environment for members of our community. And Ramel, I want to thank you and your team, because ever since I've been on the Board, you've done an outstanding job with that. So, again, just want to say thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you.
So, I have the opportunity to attend a Black History program with Morning Star Baptist Church, and I want to thank Pastor Qualls for hosting this event every year in the community. On this particular day, Dr. Carla Wyatt, who's a Harris County Treasurer, was being honored, as well as Ms. Lewis, who is a precinct chair within the district. And so, it's an awesome program. They feature children and just honor Black history, and I was very privileged to be able to be there to attend that with them.
Two minutes, I might need a little longer. Can I take trustee Wilson's?
Two minutes.
Just want to echo trustee Vandable-Starwart's comment about being at ACCT. I was there. I had to get out ahead of the snowstorm. I'm glad you all braved it and made it through. Last week, was that last week? Yeah, it was last week. Days are going by fast. As far as District 4 is concerned, we had the pleasure of hosting at Coleman College. About 20 or so members of the Houston's 90-something-plus Council's general representatives for a tour of Coleman College last week. I thought it was a remarkable experience to really walk them through. What they conclusively agreed was just a remarkable facility and operation that we have there, Coleman, so I thought it was a very well-appointed. Kudos to Dr. Harrison and her team, and Miguel Sanlon, and everyone else who was involved in pulling that together. I also want to acknowledge His Excellency Marty McVeigh, one who was really instrumental in helping us pull all of that together. In addition to that, there's just been a lot of exciting things going on this month. You mentioned SHAPE Community Center, which happens to be within District 4. Some of you might not know, typically SHAPE is a place where a lot of Black History Month activities take place, but they unfortunately suffered a fire during the holidays. So, they're on the mend, and so, thinking about them, and so, as those of you who might be familiar with the organization, I just encourage you to kind of check in with them. Besides that, most of what we did this month has been covered in terms of our trip to Austin for the Texas Association of Community College. And so, with that, I yield back my time. This is the report from District 4.
And I would also like to say that, yes, I remember from District 8, we had representation at the Austin State House, and it was great to just see our representation there. Our students were very excited, and so, it was, it's always a great opportunity for them to see and hear what Houston Community College has to offer and what our needs are so we can continue taking care of our communities. So, thank you. There are, oh, go ahead. You remembered.
Yeah. Since you mentioned about our students being in Austin, that was, that was an interesting experience, because when we went around to the different state senators and reps' offices, at first, when the group that I was with, they were kind of shy and standoffish, and then we went to the second state rep, and they started talking a little. And by the time we got to the end, they were coming in to get us to shut up, to get out of the room. But, but the students got into that, and they were so much more effective than I was. And I was, I was real glad that we did have the students with us, and that, that was a real positive thing. I could actually see that it did work well.
Speaking of students, trustee Wilson, I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention when we had the tour with the Council's generals, what really was striking for them was the students were the ones who could explain what they were doing in each room that we took them in. So, here's how this works, here's how the equipment works. So, I think it's a powerful testament that our students are really part of the messaging and our advocacy for the college, so.
Madam Chair, and speaking of student advocacy, at National in D.C., there were well over 100 students of their student government associations from the, from the community colleges across the nation. We didn't have a student.
Working on that.
So, I am asking that we have a student. We should have our president of our Student Governance Association to speak on behalf of the students, because if you wanted to understand who was really underserved, you needed to hear the stories of the Texas students on the morning of the Texas breakfast. If you want to know who we serve, it was profound, and we didn't have representation. And I would ask that, that we do that, because once those students explained who they are and what they lived through, and how they came to community college, and how it helped them, those congresspeople were humbled at what they were college and how it helped them, those congresspeople were humbled at what they were seeing. So I would like to see our student there, too.
There are no committee...
Madam Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Madam Chair, you know, Dr. Venable Starworth said something else I had to piggyback on, and so did trustee Davies. Since I've been at the College, Community College Day in Austin is really phenomenal. And it's very impressive because we take a group of students to Austin who can really articulate their stories and help them people understand what the real needs are for Houston Community College. And they speak from their hearts. And they have always represented us very, very well. And to you, Dr. Venable Starworth, when you hear of the opportunities, I think it's important that when any of us as trustees hear of opportunities that our students can participate in, I think we should, you know, take it to the chair, who could take it to the chancellor, so we, our students, won't be left out. And HCC will be represented. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. There are no committee and regular meetings scheduled for March 2025. The Board will hold a board retreat on Friday, March 7, in the afternoon. The location is to be determined and will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act requirement. For the record, we would like to announce that the mandatory financial training conducted by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board for new trustees was completed by La Lou Davis on December 23, 2023, and Shonda Shabon. No, it should have been 24, right?
It was 23.
Was it 23?
I'm an overachiever.
Okay, Shonda Shabon. On December the 9, 2024. It is required that the minutes reflect the completion of the required training. Trustee Patterson is also registered for the required training. The Board will also hold its regularly required annually training in April 2025 via in-person and self-study. A portion of the training will be provided by Board Counsel at a special meeting workshop on Wednesday, April 16. And the remainder of the training will be provided by videos as self-study. The Board's annual training is to be completed by April 30, 2025. This concludes the chairman's report. We will now hear from Dr. Ford Fisher with the chancellor's report. Dr. Fisher?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm absolutely delighted to present the chancellor's report. I would like to indicate, based upon the comments that we've made earlier, that we did have 80 students who participated in Community College Day. And it was really very, very impressive. The students were very nicely attired, and they did, as was mentioned earlier, had an opportunity to go into the offices of the elected officials. And as I understand it, all the presentations were really quite impressive. So as I present the report, yesterday, I attended the Greater Houston Partnerships' quarterly board meeting, where key data information was presented that reinforces the vital work we're doing here at Houston Community College. And I'd like to just share a few of those data points that were presented. Number one, Houston leads the nation, and we'll get to this slot in just a few minutes. But Houston leads the nation with a 1.7% increase in job gains. And over the past decade, educational attainment has declined among the ninth through 12th grade population, which is something that we're taking into account as we work in order to serve those students, in order to help shepherd them through educational programs with HCC. Four new companies are expanding to Houston. Summit, Next Gen, and Again. We are entering the aviation manufacturing partnerships with them as we seek to gain their support for education and training. United Imaging also has come to our city, whose work is around life sciences. And Foxconn will be stepping into the manufacturing areas. So we'll be following up with these companies. They will bring 720 new jobs to Houston and contribute $1.87 million in capital investment. As we look at the total enrollment comparison, spring of '24 versus spring of '25, I am pleased to report that our overall spring enrollment is up by 6.3%. The enrollment in careers leading to credentials of value, we see that the semester credit hour enrollment is up by 8.3%. Our CE credentials of value and CE's English language programs are up 23.4% and 6.7% in 2025, over the end of quarter 2024. As we look at the Veterans Chamber of Commerce, I'm excited to share that Houston Community College has signed a strategic alliance memorandum with the Houston Veterans Chamber of Commerce. This partnership will support the education and training of veteran entrepreneurs looking to start to grow their businesses. In addition, HCC's entrepreneurial team is proud to have won the Veteran Business Community Impact Award from the chamber. Lastly, HCC had the honor of co-presenting with the Veterans Chamber at the National Association of Community College Entrepreneurship Conference. So congratulations to Dr. Maya Dernovo, Associate Vice Chancellor for Entrepreneurship, and the members of her team.
Yes.
So engagement, on February the 7, several members of the administration and Board of Trustees attended the HCC Board Foundation Retreat, where we focused on strengthening collaboration with prospective donors to raise funds to support student success. On February 13, we had the opportunity to meet the president of Good Reason Houston and members of his team to explore partnership opportunities. And I would like to thank trustee Chieben for the connection made, his participation and support. Yesterday, Houston Community College hosted the Association of Medical Facility Professionals Houston Chapter Career Mentoring Event at Central College. The faculty and students from Central College actively participated in this event, providing students with the opportunity to connect with industry experts and explore career pathways in healthcare management, facilities design, and construction. And we would like to extend our sincere gratitude to Team AMFP for their partnership and for making this invaluable opportunity available to our students, and look forward to continuing to build and strengthen new industry partnerships, fostering growth for the next generation of professionals. Next, we have the National Artificial Intelligence Conference. Houston Community College will host the Fourth Annual National AI Conference, bringing together top industry leaders, academic experts, and students to explore the latest breakthroughs in artificial intelligence, April 9 through 11, at the HCC West Loop Campus. We'd like to thank Dr. Webster and members of his team for their leadership on this initiative. This is spearheaded by the HCC Digital and Information Technology Center of Excellence. The event will include panel discussions, workshops, and networking opportunities. Topics cover AI's application across industries, from gaming to healthcare to energy to manufacturing. Careers in AI will also be explored. As you remember, HCC is the first community college in Texas to offer an associate's degree in AI, and the first in the nation to offer a baccalaureate degree in AI and robotics at the community college level. And so for more information, for persons who are watching, we invite you to please make contact. And you can reach someone, anyone who can, HCC can help you with this information if you will dial 713-718-7724. Now, I would like to invite Jonah Garcia, the 2024-25 United Student Council President, to the podium to provide the USC report. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you so much, Dr. Ford Fisher. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, Madam Chancellor, Dr. Ford Fisher, respected faculty and staff. My name is Jonah Garcia, and I serve as the president of the United Studying Council. And I'm excited for the upcoming month and to share what my fellow officers and I have accomplished during the month. Today, I will be speaking on the following items, such as the spring semester planning, the first spring semester general assembly, and the TJCSG A Region 5 Conference. For the first order of business, our executive board had our first meeting on Tuesday, February the 13, to discuss our semester plans, goals, and what we want to accomplish, and the events for the spring semester. One of the projects that is in the works is offering volunteer opportunities such as the Houston Food Bank and Eagle Market Food Drive. This will be a way for SGA and USC to give back to the student body. We will volunteer in the Eagle Markets during the Houston Food Bank giveaways to serve our students. For the second order of business, USC will be having our first general assembly of the spring semester on February the 21, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m., which will be held on teams. USC and SGA District White will be represented and have an opportunity to report what they are accomplishing at their home campuses. In addition, we will have a guest speaker, Dr. Donald Parker, to speak about the topic of textbook savings. This session will provide the student leaders with practical tips and strategies to save money on textbooks, which will be beneficial for student leaders due to the high cost of textbooks. For the last order of business, USC and SGA will be attending the TJCSG A Region 5 All-Day Retreat on March 7, which will be held at the College of the Mainland. It will be a wonderful day for all student leaders to network with colleges from across the Region 5, who will be attending such as Lee College, San Jacinto College, College of the Mainland, and Galveston College. The retreat is going to be fun and informative, packed day with a keynote speaker, workshops, and an assembly to prepare us for the state conference coming up this April. This will conclude the United Studying Council report for February. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Madam Chancellor, Dr. Ford Fisher, we thank you for your support and for inspiring us to be better leaders every day. Thank you. And I yield the floor back to you, Madam Chancellor, Dr. Ford Fisher.
Thank you so very, very much, Mr. Garcia. You inspire us. Thank you so much. Great report. Thank you. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Nicole Boutte-Hidaloma, the 2024-25 Faculty Senate President, to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report. Dr. Boutte-Hidaloma.
Thank you. I am sure. Thank you very much. Greetings, members of the board, Madam Chair and Madam Chancellor. It is an honor to be before you this afternoon. This afternoon's Faculty Senate highlights are brief. With January in the rearview mirror and March right around the corner, Faculty Senate continues to work on their goals for the academic year. On February 14, the Faculty Senate had over 100 participants at our second meeting of the year. This one was completely virtual. In this meeting, the Compensation and Benefits Committee presented their compensation study, which was approved for movement to the next level for discussion and review. The Policies and Procedures Committee submitted recommendations aimed at providing clarification of workload policy language for the next iteration of the faculty handbook. And last but not least, at the same meeting, the Educational Affairs Committee presented a brief overview of their AI white paper and solicited more volunteers to assist with this important endeavor. Our next general meeting is March 21 at 1 p.m. Next, as mentioned last month, the Senate Executive Committee is doing a Q and A or listening tour at each of the major campuses so that faculty who may not be able to participate in Senate meetings can have their voices heard. So far, we've been able to speak with faculty at Coleman, Central, Frogga, and North Line. Aleve, KD, West Loop, and a town hall with our workforce faculty are all slated for the coming weeks. As notes are taken at each meeting, we will bring their requests and/or news to the appropriate administrator with the knowledge that we can elevate the winds of our tremendously successful faculty while simultaneously helping to meet their needs. I am confident that doing this this way is to foster a sense of contribution and belonging across all campuses. I have also been able to meet with the presidents and VPs of our Northwest, Coleman, Southwest, Central, and Northeast campuses. I hope that these meetings are just the start of the Faculty Senate President-President relationships as we work to meet the needs of faculties at their local campuses. Finally, I would like to extend an invitation to each of you for our annual Faculty Senate trustee reception. Again, this reception is solely for senators and board members, which will be held this Thursday, February 20, from 5 to 7 p.m. at Spanish Flowers on North Main. I thank you for your time, your attention, and your support of my esteemed faculty colleagues.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Nicole Boutte-Hidaloma. Thank you so much. And at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Aaron Henry to the podium to present the Staff Senate Report. This will be Mr. Henry's last Staff Senate Report here at HCC. I would like to congratulate Mr. Henry on accepting a new role at Houston, at Austin Community College as the Chief of Staff to the Chancellor. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And your report.
Thank you, Dr. Ford Fisher, our chair, and to our board members. I would like to begin my report this afternoon with congratulations to our new trustee, Mrs. Renee Jefferson-Patterson. And the staff also extend their condolences to Dr. Perez and the loss of her father. We also would like to celebrate Black History Month with a quote from Mrs. Barbara Jordan, "Let us remember that the world is not a playground, but a schoolroom. Life is not a holiday, but an education. One eternal lesson for us all is to teach us how to better love." The Staff Senate on February 14 held a retreat at the Frogga campus, where senators participated in activities that were focused on mental and physical health. We engaged in discussions about how we must respond to the growing challenges faced by our staff here at the college. Additionally, we discussed professional development needs for the incoming senators. The retreat also provided an opportunity to reflect on the work that was accomplished over the last two years. The success of this college is closely linked to the inclusion of the staff force and the work of the Senate. HCC continues to move onward and upward, and that success includes the efforts of the Staff Senate and all of our staff. Thanks to each of our trustees for your commitment to engaging with us and supporting staff, as well as the administration, in our ongoing efforts to improve Houston Community College. The Staff Senate will be hosting town halls online in the first week of March to engage staff members and hear their feedback on how they perceive HCC and how we can improve the day-to-day works of each of our staff members that will support the college's success. The chancellor has challenged us to aim for innovation and reach new heights, and we are working toward that goal in mind. The staff at HCC, in my opinion, are top-tier subject matter experts, and their voices should be heard and valued in every aspect of the institution. As John Donne, the English poet, writes, "No man is an island entire of itself. Every man is a piece of the continent, a part of the main." These town halls will provide an opportunity for staff to share their perspectives, suggest improvements, and discuss topics such as the upcoming Staff Senate elections. Staff morale remains a growing concern that requires our attention and support. It is important to note that this is not an effort to blame any individual or any office, but it's a reality, but a rather reality we must address at HCC. The Staff Senate will be hosting workshops this spring on work-life balance. Additionally, we will work with talent engagement to have a representative speak with the staff about the benefits of the Employee Assistance Program and the available resources. We believe it is critical to place a more emphasis on addressing the morale of our staff members. The Staff Senate extends its thanks to the chancellor for creating the ombudsman office here at the institution. This office will make recommendations regarding changes to policies and procedures with the aim of eliminating reoccurring workplace issues, and staff members are excited about this opportunity to engage in this way. At this Staff Senate meeting this month, we will recognize the First Employee of the Month through the Staff Senate, who will be honored at the next regularly scheduled meeting. HCC is home to so many dedicated individuals who work tirelessly every day to ensure the mission of this college is fulfilled. I've had the privilege of working with some of the most professional and mission-driven individuals. Thank you, Chancellor and our trustees.
Thank you so very, very much, President Henry. Thank you very, very much. We're very proud of you, the work that you have done on behalf of our staff and of our college. Congratulations to you and continued success in all that you do. Congratulations to you. At this time now, I would like to invite Dr. Jerome Drain, president of the Online College, to the podium to highlight our credentials of value. Dr. Drain?
Thank you, Madam Chancellor. Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
We know life for our students at Houston Community College is oftentimes never easy. Never was this... Never was this truer than at the onset of COVID-19. Today, I'm happy to share with you a story of triumph, self-discovery, and hope. In our credential of value spotlight, we introduce you to Aubrey Sage, an artist, entrepreneur, and an HCC Online College graduate. Aubrey is a remarkable person who built a business on her passion for poetry with middle school students. Unfortunately, COVID-19 brought our work to a grinding halt, and the pandemic ultimately destroyed that business. That's when she turned to HCC with the goal of learning how to rebrand and relaunch her business. This story of her journey to find new pathways, new passions, and embark on new horizons. It is my pleasure to present Aubrey Sage, a December 2024 graduate of HCC Online College. This is her story.
I actually have a welding certification that I received at Lone Star, and I wasn't too happy in that field, so I began doing my gift, which is poetry and mental health advocating, and I created a brand called Spread Love Not Hate, to where I would advocate English language arts and poetry and bring mental healing to middle schoolers. So when COVID hit, my business completely shut down, so I decided to go with another community college because I wasn't so satisfied at Lone Star, and I ended up at Houston Community College. And there, I decided to do business management to rebrand my branding. When I first began online, HCC, honestly, it was very difficult because I felt I was alone, although I was enrolled, and so many online students, the only thing I would do, I had online anytime, so I would literally just log on and just do my work. So at first, it was pretty tough, but everything was shut down during COVID, so being able to be a part of HCC still did give me a sense of being, and unfortunately, I ended up having a stroke while doing online HCC. When I had my stroke, unfortunately, I went 90% blind, to where I couldn't see anything. So being able to have the online anytime, as long as I was able to complete my work by the deadline, it was able to be okay. And thankfully, HCC professors are very understanding, the staff is very accommodating. Only thing I had to do was reach out to the ADA counselors, and I was able to get extensions and assistance to still be able to finish my work in due time. I graduated HCC December 2024 with my Business Management degree. I'm also on a few boards, so I decided to continue my education here, and now I'm pursuing a degree in Communications. The first thing that actually led into me being active at HCC was Black History Month, and it had a competition for poetry or anything related to Black History. So I have a song actually called BLM, which is the acronym for Black Lives Matter, and that clip won. But when I received, when I went to pick up my prize, I spoke with the Student Life Coordinator at Northline, and she told me about Student Government Association. So from there, I ended up becoming the Vice President of Online Student Government Association, and also the President of the Psychapo Northeast, which is the Psychology Club. HCC completely paved the path for me. Although I had initial intentions on coming here to rebrand my Spread Love Not Hate brand, I didn't realize I was also rebranding my whole entire character. So I began here, my stage name was Words from Rasta, and throughout my journey here at HCC, I found myself. So I rebranded myself into the real Aubrey Sage, and my goal is to be a motivational speaker and to advocate for mental health. So by being with HCC, they put me in so many rooms to where I've allowed to be myself. I've been able to express myself and spread love, not hate, and remind people that their purpose is far much more greater than their problems.
At this time, I ask that Aubrey, along with the Student Life Coordinator, Janice Vias, please stand to be recognized.
And as we have done previously, Dr. Drain, we would like to ask Aubrey and Ms. Vias to please come forward for a photograph. You can stand in front of us, and we will stand behind. Please come to the front. Thank you so very much. A very compelling story. Congratulations, Ms. Sage. I think Ms. Sage was in Austin as well. She was. Congratulations, absolutely, Janice. So good to see you. Congratulations, indeed. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Madam Chair, we are very proud of all of our students, faculty, and staff, and the work that they do every day to help students achieve success. And so now, Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. I do want to say something. Aubrey, I just want to tell you, you're resilient. Your story is amazing, and I want to encourage you to continue being yourself. Rooms that you walk in, there are people that will love you exactly for who you are, and don't you ever change for anyone. And so thank you for your contributions to Houston Community College. Your story is absolutely amazing, and I look forward to your success.
Thank you so much. Absolutely.
I also want to tell Mr. Henry that good luck over there in Austin. Just don't throw away. But I... Congratulations, Mr. Henry. And also, just to let you know that we know you will succeed because everyone that comes through HCC is a great leader, and you will do well over there. So thank you and congratulations. Now, we have the Hearing of Citizens. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. Time allotted to each citizen or organization shall be limited to four minutes. The Board may stop any speaker who makes complaints against a specific trustee or employee or comments about the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee, and may require the speaker to resume his or her comments in closed session as permitted under the Personnel Exception of the Open Meetings Act. The following persons signed up to appear before the Board are Tatiana Romero and Bradley Michalski. Tatiana, are you present? Not answering. The next one is Bradley Michalski. Bradley, come on down.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
It's nice to see you all. I am Bradley Michalski. I am a member of the HCC Honors College at the Northline Campus. For those of you who are not aware, I'd like to bring an issue up to the Board today. As an HCC Honors student, we are promised an international trip, and this year's location was London. Unfortunately, after discussion with administration, the trip has been canceled, and I'm here to bring a few discrepancies that we have recognized here today. Me and my fellow Honors students, if you may stand. I'm here representing them all. We had the opportunity to meet with some of the administration yesterday to discuss potential opportunities about rescheduling the trip. However, we also received word from our local directors, passed down from administration, that all trip, including certain domestic trips, were canceled for the next four years. And so we're asking for a little bit of clarity on that, if you happen to know. Another thing that we wanted to address is that the reason the trip was canceled was because of a safety concern, which I completely understand. However, the trip for London, the location, was set in October. The trip advisory provided by the United States government was set in place on September 6th. If we knew that there was going to be a danger traveling to London, why was the location decided on after that? Another thing that I wanted to bring up is some of our international students had to spend over $1,500 to get their visas and other documents to be able to travel to the United Kingdom, and we were wondering if there was any possibility for reimbursement for those students. And something I really wanted to discuss was the reputation of the HCC Honors College going forward. One of our biggest driving factors to have students join is this trip. A lot of students already have their tuition covered by FAFSA and other financial aid, but this trip is one of our biggest driving factors for enrollment into the HCC Honors College. My concern is that enrollment will drastically drop if this trip is not proceeded for the next four years. Personally, I can say for myself, I had the opportunity to graduate last year from HCC. However, I decided to stay for full two years because that is a requirement of going on the international trip. I don't think my time was wasted. I think I am here for a reason today, but you can hopefully see my frustration in that. I appreciate all of your time. I wish I had more, but thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Appreciate concerns raised during the Hearing of Citizens portion of the meeting. If the matters you raised are not included in the Board Agenda, state law specifically the Texts Open Meetings Act prohibits the Board from discussing or acting on these issues at this Board meeting, but the comments will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a question. Chancellor, can you at least, I think it would be appropriate to, since the speaker has spoken, make sure that someone from the administration will be in touch with them, perhaps before they even depart here? I know it took them some effort to get down here today.
Sure, no, of course. I do appreciate your comment, Trustee Davies, you mentioned, you're absolutely right. The administration met with the students on yesterday. Very, very good conversation emerged from that meeting. There is another meeting that is scheduled for next week, and the students are aware of that. That date and time both have been set, and the intent is to look at all travel to ensure that there is consistency in the policies and procedures, and that risk management is involved early on in any decisions that are made with regards to travel. And so the students are aware of that, and I do appreciate the students coming to the meeting on yesterday. I really enjoyed having the opportunity to hear from the students, to meet the students as well, and so we're all on the same page. We are aligned, and there will be a meeting next week as was scheduled on yesterday. Thank you so very, very much for coming and for expressing your views. We could not agree with you more. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to the Approval or Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from the Consent Agenda to be discussed?
Yes, Madam Chair, would like to pull item 11.
All right, so the following items not approved by the committee in item 11. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved in second, and we'll now have discussion regarding the item. Trustees, you're welcome.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the item in itself, I know we went over this during Committee of the whole. One item that I think is just important as trustees that we're paying attention to is our net revenue. While we're performing very well at 23-plus million in net revenue for the current fiscal year, the flip side of that is some observations around, you know, the reason we're performing well is because we're quite frankly saving money on some of the expenses, but one particular area that I've mentioned and will continue to mention is on the staffing side. We're at a pretty high rate of vacancies from what's being reported. So that's one point that we're generally aware of, is there's certainly a high level of vacancy. But the flip side of that is through sort of passing feedback, there's a consistent theme where people are saying, "I applied for a position at HCC, and it's taken months to get an answer or decision." So it, you know, raises my antenna as to, one, there are usually high levels of vacancies, and then, two, where are the hiccups in the process of getting people through the system? Because I think it's undoubtedly a fact that if it's taken so long to hire people, you probably lose some of the talent in the job search process. So I'd like some explanation around those two points, why the high level of vacancies, and then, two, how are we really performing in terms of when a job is posted, what's the turnaround time between the posting and that vacancy being filled?
Thank you very much, Trustee Davies, you mentioned. I'm going to ask Mr. Nathan to come forward, but as he does, what I would like to say is that some of the positions are very hard to fill, primarily because of the salary range associated with it, particularly when a person can go to industry and earn so much more. For example, with one of the positions that we had, we searched for an extraordinarily long period of time, and that was for our procurement position, and it was just simply hard to find someone who was willing to leave industry to come to work for us. But we were able to get a person who is extraordinarily well-qualified to join us, and we're delighted about that. But I'm going to defer to Mr. Nathan to also answer some of the other questions that were raised.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, trustee, for the question. So we use different metrics to monitor how long it takes. Time to fill is one of those metrics. When it comes to part-time adjuncts, we actually, seventeen and a half days is our average time to fill. When it comes to part-time staff, nineteen days is the average time to fill. When it...
of the salary range associated with it, particularly when a person can go to industry and earn so much more. For example, with one of the positions that we had, we searched for an extraordinarily long period of time, and that was for our procurement position. And it was just simply hard to find someone who was willing to leave industry to come to work for us. But we were able to get a person who is extraordinarily well-qualified to join us, and we're delighted about that. But I'm going to defer to Mr. Nathan to also answer some of the other questions that were raised.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, trustee, for the question. So we use different metrics to monitor how long it takes. Time to fill is one of those metrics. When it comes to part-time adjuncts, we actually, seventeen and a half days is our average time to fill. When it comes to part-time staff, nineteen days is the average time to fill. When it comes to full-time faculty, it's sixty days time to fill, and that is not uncommon because we actually use a screening committee as a part of that process. When it comes to full-time staff, we are higher on that end. Actually, we're over seventy days in a time to fill. One of the goals that my team has is actually reducing that by ten business days. That's one of the goals that they have this year. But part of our process is the Chancellor and I meet several times a month to go through all requisitions and all offers. And part of that exercise is due diligence as it relates to making sure that expenses of salaries do not exceed a certain percent of the budget. That's one. Two is to make sure that the positions that are being filled are of a priority. So were they budgeted? Are they replacements? Are they new positions that weren't budgeted before? Are they student-facing? Things of that nature. So that is an exercise that we go through. We do have a higher percentage of vacancy right now, twelve percent. And, but we also have a very low attrition rate. We have very low turnover. So we have folks who do stay with the college for a long period of time, which is a positive.
Question on the vacancy, that twelve percent. If you were to estimate a breakdown, how much of that is in adjunct faculty, full-time faculty, part-time staff, full-time staff, administrative positions?
So the breakdown, the majority of that is going to be on the staff side. The adjunct pipeline moves very actively, very quickly. As a matter of fact, you have on the agenda for your approval some faculty positions this afternoon. The majority of those are actually folks who are internal, because we continue to have success in moving internal folks from part-time to full-time. But those vacancies tend to be higher on the staff side than on the adjunct or full-time faculty side.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, because a lot of the feedback that I've gotten has been on the staff side in particular. Now, they could be anomalies, but typically, one time is accidental, twice is coincidental. And there's certain positions that I'm pretty well aware of through last year that just took us a while to fill. And, you know, again, this is tied back to the budget, right? So what's an optimal level of vacancy? I would assume it's somewhere below ten percent. And, and so the larger concern is we're tasking our existing personnel with a lot of responsibility, a lot of moving parts, a lot of things that need to get done. But if we're maintaining such high levels of vacancies, it's great that we don't have high attrition. We want to keep it that way. But there's a reasonable concern that, you know, burnout could be occurring, there are places where we're dropping the ball. And so what's our game plan to make sure, you know, not only internally for our purposes, but that also external people, you know, as you attempt to recruit talent, think, hey, if I apply, I'm going to hear something within a reasonable timeframe?
Yeah. So one question that you asked, what's optimal vacancy? Seven percent would be optimal to that question. The other challenge is always to the staff to make sure that they are communicating with candidates. And actually, over the past eight months, we have instituted additional communication protocols to our candidate pool to let them know what, where they are in the process, in the application process, whether they're still being considered, whether an interview is pending, or whether they've actually moved to the offer approval stage so that they can anticipate something is coming up. I'm actually happy to provide data directly to the trustees. I know I've done that several years ago. We are a very popular place to work, and we have a lot of folks who consider us. This past Saturday, we held our annual Faculty Career Fair, and it was an example. We had over 560 people who registered, checked in for opportunities with the college. So there's no shortage of demand for folks who want to come to work here. It's just working with our hiring managers throughout the system to move folks along to get those positions filled.
More questions, then I'm done, and this might involve finance. What's the target percentage of the budget that we are targeting for personnel spend?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent. And where are we right now, given the current budget?
Roughly personnel, salary and wage and benefits, roughly fifty percent as of December 31st, 2024.
Got it. And the target is sixty percent?
Roughly, yes.
So we're twenty percent behind target?
Ten percent.
Ten percent. I know, the raw number is ten, but ten percent over fifty is twenty percent. Or ten percent, terms of over sixty is sixteen percent, I should say. Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment as well, and of course, I defer to the members of the team, but in reviewing the budget that was approved, what it indicated was that we were at sixty-three percent in that budget, and some of that included benefits as well. So, yeah.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, we're now ready to vote on item number 11.
Sorry about that. Yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
Voting has closed. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Now going into topics for discussion and/or action. Is there a motion to approve item A, pressure washing services?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is recommended to the board to authorize the chancellor to execute contracts with Sparkle Janitorial Services and Extreme Clean Pressure Washing to provide pressure washing services in accordance with RFP C 25-11 in support of the Facilities Department. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Dietrich Bittenfeld, Executive Director of Procurement, and Mr. Robert McCracken, Vice Chancellor for Facilities, will come to the podium to respond to questions. Please.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chancellor. Thank you, board chair and trustees. We're asking that you authorize the chancellor to execute contracts with Sparkle Janitorial Services and Extreme Clean Pressure Washing. This is in support of an already awarded vendor, September 19th of last year. We just have a broad number of facilities, and so we resolicited and found two vendors that will perform with 100% small business certification.
I don't have any questions.
Questions? Trustees? No questions?
No.
Ready to vote on item A, pressure washing services. Voting is now open.
Yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item B, elevator modernization and repairs for 3100 Main Street?
So moved.
Second? Has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is recommended to the board to authorize the chancellor to execute a contract with Prestige Elevator Services LLC, the lowest responsible bidder, meeting specifications to provide the elevator modernization and repairs at 3100 Main in accordance with IFB 25-17. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Bittenfeld and Mr. McCracken will respond to questions.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor and board. Again, we ask that you authorize the chancellor to execute this contract. It will actually result in a per-unit decrease in costs. We will be replacing all eight and renovating those. The existing equipment is between 23 and 60 years old. So again, we'd like to expeditiously get people up and down the floors and safely. And we did build in some anticipation, so any concern about tariffs has been addressed with our contingency.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a few questions.
Any questions, concerns?
Trustee Chair.
I do, but I think Mr. McCracken has some comments before I dive in.
No, go ahead. I think your questions are maybe related to my comments, so.
All right. Well, I did just want to say thank you all very much for your rapid responses to my questions. You answered everything, but I did want to highlight a couple of points for the benefit of my colleagues. First, I had asked about the 900-day schedule of the project, and when asked, y'all gave us a ray of sunshine that it can be shorter. So I wanted to give you a platform to explain that to the board, please.
Sure. So when we originally were proposing this, if you remember, our elevators had two banks, one that served certain floors and the other bank served other floors. And so when they were doing the specifications for this project, which run about 100 pages, it was to take one elevator at a time for repairs because that was serving both sides. We didn't want to delay people getting up and down. But because both sides now serve all of the floors, we believe we can take an elevator down from each bank and actually take two elevators down at the same time. So essentially cuts project time in half.
Second comment that I had, again, thank you for the rapid response on this. As my colleagues know, I've voiced concerns in the past about the impact that high inflation would have on our deferred maintenance liability, total liability. But this proves a really compelling proof point that maybe my concerns were misfounded. And so wanted to, again, thank you for pulling that information together. I'll give you a platform to explain that content to my colleagues, but also wanted to ask for future procurements where we have good alignment between the scope and deferred maintenance item. If we could highlight those as proof points so we can continue testing the impact of the inflation we experienced over the last two to three years against our 2019 Jacob Study on Deferred Maintenance, please.
Sure. I think that's a great suggestion. We can incorporate that. And so essentially, the question related to when we look back at the 2019 Jacob Studies, there were two line items in there related to elevators, one of which was the deferred maintenance at the time of 2019, and the other was related to the expected maintenance over the life cycle, which would essentially bring us to 2025 through 2026, where those items would be expiring. If you added those two numbers together, you essentially come out with the total value of this contract plus the $500,000 that we spent last year to do the freight elevator. And so the net result was that the Jacob Study from 2019 and our actual cost aligned really well in this case. And a caveat to that, one of the reasons is because the Jacob Study for future lifecycle items included an inflation rate of three percent. So in 2019, they were projecting the cost for this year of 2.1 million. That was an inflated number. And so the original amount of 1.1 million that was projected in 2019, we did not spend at that time. So that number had to get inflated, but the net result was we ended up essentially on target. Just another caveat on this, essentially, this gives you new elevators. The only thing that they are keeping out of the existing elevators is the floor and the frame. All of the equipment is getting replaced, as well as the motors, the hoist, the safety equipment, et cetera.
Trustee Chabot?
No more.
No more?
That was all from me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we need to keep our elevators going, because if you've never gotten locked in one, I tell you, it's not fun, especially with, I had the opportunity to be locked in one with 20 students. So, yeah, so it's, we got to keep them going. So, thank you. If there's no other comments, questions, now we're ready to vote on the elevator modernization and repairs.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item C, access control and video management system replacement system-wide?
So moved.
Second? Second. Okay. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The college is in the process of enhancing its security measures system-wide in an effort to provide the ultimate student experience for safety and in compliance with requirements as outlined by the state of Texas. This item is presented to recommend that the board authorize the chancellor to execute a cooperative contract with ERC Environmental and Construction Services LLC under Choice Partners Cooperative Contract Number 23016MR-14 to provide access, control, and video management system replacement system-wide. With your permission, Madam Chair, Mr. McCracken and Dr. Bittenfeld will respond to questions.
Madam Chancellor and board, again, this will authorize the chancellor to execute a cooperative contract with ERC Environmental and Construction Services under this cooperative mechanism. This is the third project that is 100% small business performed. So this will drive funds into our local community. It's the lowest responsive bidder, and this will accept all IT and police parameters for 66 buildings.
And just to add, this is the project that we discussed in closed session a couple of weeks ago and was primarily funded through the budget amendment from June of '24.
Trustees, any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Trustee Brightcard.
We haven't changed how we analyze bids, right? This is the second one where you talk about minority business, and I just want to make sure we're still analyzing bids the way we have in the past, and we haven't changed our formula.
Right. No, the disparity study and other studies haven't been completed for us to consider anything beyond small business. So we consider to vendors based on small business certifications. We do accept small business certifications from City of Houston, Port of Houston, and other entities. And for certain projects, we may have slightly different goals, but for each of these, we had a 35% goal, and we actually reached 100% small business self-performance.
So we've been analyzing these and giving the points in the various areas the way we always have, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no questions, concerns? Okay, we're ready to vote on item C.
A yes for me, Sharon.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item D, drop-in childcare services?
So moved.
Second? It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to recommend authorizing the chancellor to execute a contract with YMCA of Greater Houston to provide drop-in childcare services in accordance with project number RFP 24-18. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Bittenfeld and Dr. Vigran Glover will present the item and respond to questions. Dr. Bittenfeld?
Thank you, Chancellor and board. This contract is something that provides a service, childcare, for our students at Southeast Campus. YMCA is the incumbent vendor. They have requisite certifications and experience with numerous different educational entities and in the community. And this proposal also includes the improvement of services for Southeast College.
Concerns? Yes. Dr. Vanderbilt?
I'd like to know if we will be able to expand this kind of service to other districts.
I would certainly like to respond to that, and that's certainly a possibility. When I was at Northeast, we did-
When I was at Northeast, we did have the drop-in services there at the North Line campus. It wasn't so heavily populated at that time at the Northeast campus, so we discontinued it. Then we opened it up at the Northeast campus, and it was utilized quite heavily. So I think an analysis of where the needs are would certainly vote well for us to look at investigating how that can then be expanded. Thank you.
I think that it's a very reasonable price.
I'm sorry.
Particularly since students use it maybe three hours or just the term of a class. So I was looking at the $95,000 annually, and it's a very reasonable price. Childcare is expensive, and we have an agreement with Star of Hope, do we not?
That's correct.
And they are building a new facility that will hold 280 kids, are they not? So they are two blocks from South Campus. So this gives us an opportunity to help parents who have children who do not have childcare in order for them to attend, so thank you for this.
And that's, there's one additional point associated with that, isn't there? We do work or we partner with childcare providers throughout the areas, and that in some instances tends to influence whether or not the residents are going to take their children to the childcare facility that is nearby where they live or if they're going to bring the children to the campus. So that makes a difference as well.
Yes, trustee Linton Gary?
Trustee Vandabel-Stalworth, she made the comment I was going to make, but thank you anyway because I really think the childcare services is very, very necessary. And in the process of evaluating which campuses would better utilize this service, could you please evaluate the Stafford Campus? Because we have a heavy population over there, and we have a young population of students over there who are parents.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, trustee Linton Gary. In fact, I saw Dr. Webster nodding his head in agreement. But Dr. Veer Grand Glover would like to make a comment as well.
Thank you, Chancellor, and agreeing with what the Chancellor was saying. This also gives us an opportunity, given SB 459 and House Bill 1361, which were passed by the 8th Legislature, to support parenting students. So this gives us more leverage to expand our services. So thank you, Chancellor, for your support, and we look forward to working with our other colleagues across the district to provide what's much needed because we know that childcare is indeed one of the top barriers to completion, right? And so the evening hours and the weekend hours, we're also expanding, so thank you, Chancellor.
That was one of the comments that I was going to make also was that, you know, we needed to expand it to other areas because it's always like, well, why do they have it and we don't have it? And I know that in North Line, there was an interest for it. And but like Chancellor, you said, you know, we provide them and then things happen, you know? So I'm glad that we're continuing it, and we'd just like to see it expanded. So thank you. Now we're ready to vote on drop-in childcare services.
Yes for me, Sharon.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Item E personnel agenda faculty?
So moved.
So moved.
Second? Move second.
Dr. Linton Gary, second.
Okay. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to the board for approval of the personnel action item for full-time contracted faculty. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Mr. Rodney Nathan, interim Vice Chancellor of Talent Engagement, will respond to all questions. Mr. Nathan?
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. You have in front of you for your approval five names for full-time faculty positions. I will point out that four out of the five are already with us as adjuncts moving to full-time status. So that's 80% right there, and that stays consistent with where we've been with the faculty that we hire, majority being internal already with us. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair.
We'll now vote for Item E personnel agenda.
Yes for me, Sharon.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of nine to zero.
Before we move on to the other one, I know that we have Personnel that's been with us for a long time, that she just informed me that this will be her last meeting, so I want to congratulate her and thank her. Farrell Prestige. Thank you for your longevity of service, and we wish you well and lots of happiness out there. Thank you. We move to Item F, HCC Foundation Quarterly Report. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attached is the quarterly report regarding the HCC Foundation. This is a report item. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Mr. Kering-Schmidt will respond to questions. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you very much, trustee Laredo, Board Chair, trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher. It is my honor to be able to present the HCC Foundation Quarterly Report. Honoring Christina Morales. The HCC Foundation's 2025 Gala is Saturday, April 26th, at the Hilton Americas. We are looking forward to seeing you there. The Honorable Christina Morales is our 2025 Crystal Eagle honoree. Christina is a familiar face to the HCC Foundation, having served on the board for many years and now as a board ambassador. In Christina's role as a Texas state representative and her extensive civic ties, she has shared a commitment to equity in education and its role as a driver of economic mobility for Houston-area students. Christina and her family have been longstanding philanthropic givers to the community and to the HCC, including a name building at Southeast. We are excited to honor Christina Morales. We invite you to be a 2025 Gala sponsor. We thank all of our Gala sponsors here today, all of them. Thank you all very, very much. We are grateful to the Chancellor for her support as a silver sponsor and with her leadership advocating for Gala sponsorships throughout Greater Houston. As the Chancellor said, the HCC Foundation now submits its report. It's a quarterly report based on the financial results through August 31st, 2024, for fiscal year '24, based on the audited financials. And just real briefly, the HCC Foundation, as you can see, is a jewel for HCC. We raise funds to support HCC students' success, and over the past six years, the HCC Foundation has grown substantially. We are currently, as of 8/31/2024, returning on HCC's investment a 300% return on investment. Or for every dollar HCC invests in the HCC Foundation, we return $4. These are our high-level financial results, and I'll move forward to the very end to say thank you. On behalf of HCC students, who are the recipients of philanthropic support, we thank you, and we also invite you to the HCC Foundation Scholarship Luncheon on February 28th. Are there any questions for the HCC Foundation?
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll see you at the next event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The board will now adjourn to a closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076 of the Open Meetings Act. As stated in the notice of this meeting, should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the board on any matter considered in closed session, such final action, vote, or decision shall be taken up in the open meeting or subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof. The meeting is hereby adjourned to executive session at?
5:42 PM.
Your buddy, huh?
I'll go ahead and start. The open portion of this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Houston Community College is now reconvened at?
6:38 PM.
Is there a motion to approve item G?
So moved.
There is second.
Do I have to read all this?
It has been moved in second. Is there any discussion on this item? If there's none, then we will now vote on item G. Motion to renew consideration of a proposed settlement regarding United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, Houston Division, Zelda Brown versus Houston Community College System at All, civil case 4.20 CB02186, Jimmy Adams at All versus Houston Community College System, Jeffrey Austin at All versus Houston Community College System. Case, voting is now open.
Yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
Aaron, I don't know what happened. It jumped around.
Okay, I can...
The motion passed with a vote of five in favor, three opposing, one abstaining.
Thank you. Now, we will vote on item H. Consideration of a proposed settlement regarding United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, Houston Division, Zelda Brown versus Houston Community College System, Jimmy Adams versus Houston Community College, Jeffrey Austin versus Houston Community College System. Voting is now open. Board members, please cast your vote.
Got to make a motion.
Oh, sorry. Is there a motion?
Second.
This is very important, so let me go back. Is there a motion regarding item H? Consideration for proposed settlement regarding... Is there a second?
Trustee Davies, second.
It has moved in second. Is there any discussion on the item?
Madam Chair. Yes. I think that whatever transpires here today, we all need to understand what the ramifications will be to this college moving forward. Being a trustee that was here over 12 years ago, and the condition that this college was in with frivolous lawsuits coming from left to right, and the money that was just going out the window, and the lawlessness and crookedness that existed across this college, starting with, you know, whether it's the board or the lawsuits that were coming at us, and so just being cognizant of that. In the end, I, of course, support whatever the majority is going to want to do here, but in the end, I just need us to understand, I hope, what will come from this and the repercussions of this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Wilson had his finger. Yes, sir.
We all share a common pursuit of purpose and meaning in our lives, and we're united in our desire to contribute positively to the world for the benefit of future generations. This shared commitment should guide our actions moving forward. The future of HCC is promising, and we must focus on fostering an environment of growth, innovation, harmony, trust, and mutual respect for all members of the HCC community. By doing so, we can ensure that HCC continues to thrive as an institution that is not only academically distinguished, but also a model of integrity and cooperation.
Thank you. I also had a concern. My decision to vote, as I did in the previous one, was because I always take the students into consideration, the fees that we're charging them, the extra tuition and fees and monies, and I just feel that this, you know, by just paying this amount is taking away from them, and I only wish that we could help our students even more. I know that that would increase our enrollment, especially when we actually see students out there that come to us and say they can't afford to come here, you know, so that's my only hesitance in going forward with this, but thank you. Madam Chair. Just a second. Trustee Thomas had her hand, and then you.
Counsel, as far as conflict of interest, any trustees that have a conflict of interest or anything like that, can you talk to that?
Your mic isn't on.
She just asked if there were any... I asked about conflict of interest and any trustees that need to recuse themselves if there is a conflict of interest. It's something that's really important, and that in the end, you need to understand what that will put you in in terms of a predicament, so conflict of interest is something that I'd like counsel to address.
I'm not aware of any facts that would indicate a conflict of interest, but there conflict of interest discussed in the bylaws if there's a substantial interest in a business entity that would benefit from this transaction, or if anyone has received any gifts in aggregate of $100 in the past 12 months, but as I said, I'm not aware of any facts that would indicate either of those are an issue.
Thank you. Trustee Linton Gary.
Madam Chair, I concur with what you said in regards to monies being used, excuse me, to benefit our students because of so many individuals who want to attend our college who cannot afford to, and we should be pouring money into our students, but with that being said, we do have to consider how we vote on this issue because we know based on closed session, which we cannot discuss, one way would cause the institution to spend a lot of money, and I think that's what we need to consider. We need to walk away from this with spending as least money as possible.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Of course.
I think it's important, since other colleagues have shared their expressions, this is not a vote that I think any of us take lightly. When I got sworn onto this board, one of the things that I indicated was that I would always take a long-term view of this college and think about what was in the collective best interest. This matter preceded my tenure here, as well as the tenure of some of my colleagues. We've all had extensive opportunities to consider all the different aspects of the matter at hand, and I think it's a reasonable conclusion that some may or may not have reached about the real cost. So there's one financial cost to the college in any legal matter that, you know, involves potential monetary liability. There's that cost that you consider today. There's the other costs, the unrealized costs, the hidden costs of going down one pathway that could lead you to even greater costs. So I think I respect the perspectives that everyone has brought to this discourse. We relied heavily on legal counsel in really trying to analyze and understand what the college's position is, and when I think about the long-term future for this college, those same students that we sit here and advocate for every day, and how important it is that we continue to work collectively as a board in forging forward and moving ahead with the important business that's at hand, so I think I speak to a number of my colleagues in saying that careful consideration, this is not, you know, however anyone votes, a lot of thought and consideration has gone into the process of reaching a decision on this matter that's persisted for so long. With that, if there are no other comments, Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the existing motion by adding that the item be moved forward to be paid out of fund balance, and that would require a second.
Any discussion on that? Can you tell us your motion again?
I think Board, yeah, I think Board Counsel was gonna say something.
As I understood it, the motion was to amend the item so that if approved, the settlement would be paid out of fund balance, and General Counsel made the request, she can provide more details, but anything coming out of fund balance requires specific approval by the board, and so that needs to be specified here where, you know, we haven't done that in other settlement situations, but this one is different, and so I'll let General Counsel speak to that more.
Yes, because of the terms that were discussed in closed session, this amount wouldn't come out of the operating budget for this fiscal year, so instead, fund balance, that would be the proposal.
Yes.
You amend, otherwise it would come out of the operating budget.
Second, I think. Is that right?
No, we're in discussion mode.
I agree.
Anybody? Trustee Chabon, I could see you, you're waiting.
Yeah, my face spoke a thousand words there, didn't it? I'm confused. We've got a significant revenue dollar figure that would easily cover the number that we can't talk about in open session, so I'm just not sure why this has to be a thing.
Just because it wasn't contemplated when the budget was adopted by the board.
Yeah, Trustee Cheeby, if I could opine there, I think the construct of our current budget is such that such an item would require budgetary amendment to pay it out of operating, you know, the current operating budget.
We've got to act either way. This is the easy button. Let's do the easy thing. That makes sense to me, thank you.
Do we have a number for our fund balance? We have an amount?
It would be the number that was discussed in closed session, ma'am.
Our budget, we will discuss it in our budget meeting, so, okay. All right, so the amendment right now is, again?
The amendment is, if approved, the settlement would be paid from fund balance. We're voting on the amendment? Yes, correct.
Amendment, only the amendment that we've... Sharon, do you want to read us what you have?
I have a motion by Trustee Davies, and second by Dr. Van Vleesstalwar. I have a motion by Trustee Davies and second by Dr. Vanville Starworth, that the motion to amend the item, if the item is approved, the funding would come from the fund balance.
Is that correct? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Trustee Linton Gary?
Oh, yes.
Oh, we're listening to your music.
That's a no for me, but my notice didn't come up.
I just opened it. Dr. Linton Gary?
I said yes.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven in favor, one opposing, one abstaining.
Thank you. Now we're voting on item H.
As amended. We're voting on H as amended. Right. So this was an amendment to item H. Now we need to vote on H as amended.
So what's the difference?
We added the source of funds. The source of the payment was amended. The item was amended to add the source to included in. Correct.
All right, got it.
Yes.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, can I have a couple words? I want to make it clear why I voted the way that I voted. I'm new to this position. I've only been in this seat twice, and I don't have enough information about these cases. And I would like to be a little bit more informed before I cast a vote. So I ask that you respect that. My district is the district that would have to vote me in, so don't tell me anything about me not being elected based on my vote. I think I'm making the right decision for my district with the knowledge that I have right now.
Thank you. You have every right for that.
Madam Chair, have you closed the voting?
Voting is closed. Waiting.
I actually have two votes. Dr. Linton Gary? I didn't get your vote.
I said, I said yes.
Okay, received. And Trustee Patterson, are you abstaining? I didn't get your vote.
Yes, I am.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of five in favor, three opposing, one abstaining.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, Madam Chair, before we close out? May I make a comment, please?
Did Sharon, did you announce the vote yet? Okay.
5-3-1.
Yes, 5-3-1.
Trustee Jefferson Patterson, I respect your decision, and I appreciate what you said because your vote does belong to you, and you have, and you are new, and you don't have all the information that we have. So because of that fact, you made the right decision, and your comments were very well received.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for looking out for your community.
Madam Chair, I also just want to apologize for, to Trustee Jefferson Patterson for any nonsense she's getting. You know, being trustee sometimes with this board is incredibly taxing. They're really nefarious people and kind of interested odds, and I am sorry that you had to deal with that tonight. But I appreciate your vote and look forward to working with you.
So we say welcome to the board. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. With no, no, with no further business coming before the board, this meeting of HCC Board of Trustees is hereby adjourned at?
6:57 PM.